Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Bogota Board of Education's regular virtual meeting, April 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the flag, salute. The flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record filed with the Clark of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Eric, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Oliveris.
That's my holiday music.
Mrs. Coles, absent. Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Miranda? I believe absent, right?
I don't, yes, I don't know this.
Miss Montgomery, absent. Mr. Ortega?
Present.
Ms. Ruckett?
Present.
Mr. Chavez?
Present.
Mrs. Van Bruin?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Also present, excuse me, Mr. Kennedy Superintendent, William Sukas, our attorney, Elsie Luca, student congress representative, Mr. Efsil, school business administrator and board secretary, and Elizabeth, who is assistant board secretary. They have a motion to for hearing of citizens on agenda items only, please.
Motion, Ortega.
And BC, I believe I got. Alright, name discussion? Alright, I would just ask, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I'd ask anyone, please to state your name and address, and if you could type something in the chat, please also, we need your name and address in there as well for record keeping. So. Anyone has a question, give me your hand. No. Damien, do you see anyone?
No.
Okay. I may have a motion to close, citizen comments, please.
No, please, Dalia.
Thank you, Ortega.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move on now to the hearing on the budget. Mr. Kennedy, the floor is yours.
Okay. Okay, just making sure I'm muted. I'm not muted, am I? Thumbs up. Okay, great. First want to thank everyone for coming tonight for the 2021-2022 budget presentation. Myself, Mr. Kennedy, and our business administrator, Ervin Efsil. Also, the Board of Education President Kathy Van Buren, Vice President Jose Chavez, Trustees Idalia Alvarez, Lisa Coles, Eileen Lewis, Frank Miranda, Amanda Montgomery, John Ortega, and BC Ruckett. Also, just would like to acknowledge the Finance Committee, which is Eileen Lewis, John Ortega, Jose Chavez, and Kathy Van Buren, who worked on this budget. So, our budget drivers, what do we use that goes into our budget? First thing is staffing needs, curriculum requirements, capital maintenance, capital improvements, contracted costs, which come under salary and benefits, special education costs, which is student IEPs and legal mandates, unfunded mandates, security, and new classroom space. Maintaining our schools, the foundation of the budget is staffing and benefits. You know, we try to make a point to keep small class sizing, maintaining special needs students in district, safety, maintenance and upgrades to our facilities, and technology upgrades are major priorities. Also, this year, with the lease of a new building, we had to make sure that we were able to staff that, provided with the proper security and technology. We will continue our wellness center that is in the junior, senior high school with Care Plus for social and emotional needs. All four buildings next year will keep class three offices in them, and we will also hire a new guidance counselor specifically for the K-5 students in elementary schools. Maintaining our schools, so the child study team continues to budget and hire the appropriate number of aides and special ed teachers based on student needs. All schools have access to Google Chromebooks, and the one thing I am happy to say was last year, when the pandemic hit, we were ready with technology, and we were able to get that out to all students, and we weren't looking for Chromebooks. We had them, and we were able to give them out to everybody. We want to continue smart boards in all classrooms, so they have capabilities of large touchscreens, digital textbooks, Google Classroom, Google Docs, Gmail, and since we're now all Google Education. The other thing that we made a big push on was we dedicated one gigabyte of internet fiber for all buildings, which is was helping us right now when we're able to stream live from the classroom with very little problems with the internet. Another thing is that we constantly worry about is internet safety. So, we have protection with ransomware. We also have off-site backup solution. We also have off-site filtering capability. So, when the students are on the Chromebooks, we see what they can do, and we have access to make sure that we're blocking certain websites. We also have Speak Up and Gaggle that filter their emails and documents, and if anything pops up, any keywords, we get an email alerting us of any problems. So, what we've been really working on is we're preparing for the 2020 new standards through two approaches. We're working with the South Bergen Joint Curriculum Consortium, and we are also preparing to do our own curriculum writing to review those documents. We are also continuing to work with Bergen Community College for early college programs and the seal of bilinguacy testing and recognition for students who are bilingual. Alright, protecting our investments, maintenance, pros and capital reserves. So, some of the things that we were able to do this year with the COPS grant was we were able to improve our security with little cost to the district. So, we were able to provide window film to all ground level windows, replacing cameras throughout the district. Right now, I think we have hardly any dead spots in any buildings and around perimeter of our schools. We also have installed Raptor Visibit Management. So, when people come to our building, when they're allowed to come back to our building, they have the ability, we can run their license to make sure there's no major issues before they come in the building. We replaced old doors in the high school that were wooden and were tough to close when it got hot, and we also rekeyed the whole district. We're also getting handheld radios in all buildings that have the ability to communicate with each other and the local police department. The other thing that we're trying to do, and cost saving for the district, is the ESIP project, which that plan will assist the district in proving the overall energy efficiency of the district at no cost through the savings built into the plan. This summer, we should start to start seeing some of those projects. That is LED lighting upgrades, boiler replacement, ventilator replacement, steam trap replacement, piping insulation, automated building management control systems, low-flow domestic hot water devices, rooftop unit replaces, and solar panel installation. The other thing that we also continue to look at is we want to make sure that we are using evidence-based programs before we purchase, and there's real data to support what we want to do. A real connect, a real goal that we have been working on is reading, and our goal within the next year is to have 90% of all our K-3 students reading proficiently. We're putting plans together, we're doing professional development for teachers, and we're able to provide tier one, tier two, and tier three to help students who are struggling. So, now when a student comes into our district, we give them a placement test, and we recognize right away if they have any issues reading with those K first and second and third grade students right away, and we're able to put them into a program and catch it earlier than later. That's the key that we're recognizing. We're not putting them in a classroom, and the teacher's recognizing after a couple of weeks that the kid is struggling. We're able to catch it right away, begin RTI, and move them in the right direction. Next year, we're also looking to improve on our math evidence-based interventions. We want to make sure that we have another type of test for the students to take and provide interventions to help them immediately. SEL, we're going to continue doing our SEL initiatives that began, obviously, with Care Plus, who provides individual group and family counseling to identified students in our district. We also implemented specific wellness days that allow our guidance, child study team, staff, and teachers to take a break from academics and focus on activities that foster social and emotional well-built being. We offered a few different parent workshops that provided base on parent interest and needs. All elementary-level teachers utilize Sanford Harmony during weekly wellness periods that target socially-emotional learning, and at the high school level, wellness is integrated into health classes to assist students in increasing self-awareness and coping skills. So, next year in math, what we talked about already a little bit is we're looking at various published documents on prerequisite math skills to determine the priorities and instruction in each grade level. We recognize with the pandemic that some things are falling behind in math and in other classes, so we're making sure that we're getting the key skills that have to be touched upon to make sure that when we move on to next year that they're ready to go. We're not going to concentrate on some things that we determine are not going to be that important and spend two weeks on something when it might only need a couple of days. We're also going to be piloting a Ready Math, new program next year in certain grade levels, and then we're going to make a decision on purchasing new math curriculum for the elementary schools. And again, we're going to continue with our new evidence-based interventions and strategy programs. An ELA, we talked about already, is we, our goal is to achieve students' reading proficiency at 90% by the time they're in third grade. So, but we could catch it there early. The data tells us if you have them reading that they're going to do better in Algebra I scores in when they get to eighth and ninth grade. So, we have different, different criterias that everyone is looking at, and the teachers are using in each classroom. In science, we're continuing using the Elevate Science for one more year left in the digital subscription. We're doing a curriculum review, and a science committee will review programs and pilot a prospective program next year in a couple of classrooms to help determine the direct from the district will go two years from now. So, we're trying to look ahead. We're not saying, okay, we're not worried about science for one more year because we still have the subscription. We want to start looking into other programs and find the best one for us. In social studies, part of our diversity initiative this year, we're starting to look closely at the curriculum, and what else can we add to the curriculum that is going to help our students see a little bit more of themselves in our curriculum? So, we're touching upon different topics that might have been skipped over or have not been touched upon, except in certain months of the year. So, we're doing a big step on that, and then also looking at all the other initiatives that are coming out with all different cultures. 21st century, we're going to look to expand our career explorations through the middle school courses. At the middle school level, our district's looking to implement a new cycle class, Career Explorations 1 and 2 that incorporate standards, and also our district will continue to implement and revise financial literacy courses in the high school level to meet the 2020 requirements. Visual and performing arts is to expand opportunities for all students. We're looking to hire a part-time dance teacher that will introduce dance into the curriculum. Health and PE, there are over 13 separate New Jersey statutes that must be covered in health classes and ensuring that teachers are aware of these statutes in the curriculum, and we're instructing these topics in their lessons is imperative. We are also, in addition with the recent state adoption of the 2020 standards, the district will need to assemble a team to help revise those PE standards. In world language, our district will continue to help students become more proficient in Spanish. Spanish flu is currently offered at every grade level. In addition to the AP tests, we are now striving to help as many seniors and juniors receive the seal of bilinguacy, which is a state-approved seal that verifies their proficiency in at least two languages. So, what it comes down to this is a tax impact. A taxpayer who owns an average assessed home defined by the tax assessor as $263,526 for 21, 22 will pay $117 extra for the year, which comes out to about $9.75. Here's our summary of our last two budgets from last year to this year and the differences. If you remember, last year, we did not raise the taxes, and we lost $600,000 in state aid. So, what we are doing right now is we are playing catch-up to that, and that is important to understand with the tax increase this year. We're adding new buildings, we are starting to see new students from the River Club project, the new apartments down there. We're starting to see that. So, this is a couple-year project to catch up on that money. So, that's where we are with that. This is just the revenue side where most of the money comes from. As you can see, the tax levy and state aid make up most of it, and then some grants and things of that nature. This is the summary of appropriations, just what the money is really getting broken down to and what are the changes from year to year. For example, if we have some, a little less tuition at a district, students or a little bit more this year, and it just breaks it down by everything according to. So, you might see some big jumps in here, but that's mostly because of a new building, we're hiring new positions for that building that we haven't had. So, the key was that the state, we got an increase from last year to this year of $1.4 million, and that's why we're able to have a 2% tax increase and not lose any of our programs and add a whole new building to the district. Pie chart two explains the same thing where the money is going. And then our summary. So, here's our summary of the 21-22 budget summary. Your salary increases from the BEA, from all are actually, all of our units are all settled now. So, that's where you're seeing that. We're adding new positions. One, dedicated counselor for the elementary school, which we haven't had in a while. Preschool expansion grant, we're adding a new teacher and a new aide to Bixby School. So, now all of our, all two elementaries will have a preschool in their building with the preschool grant. We also are going to hire a new full-time tech for the district. With the amount of technology that we have, we need a little bit more help to make sure that we continue running very smoothly. The new building needs an administrator, a secretary, a nurse, teacher, part-time teachers, custodians, and a class three officer. Our benefits increases about 5% over this year's cost. We want to continue our Chromebook initiative. We want to continue district-wide educational software, our dedicated lines to our buildings, cybersecurity, and computers for additional staff. We want curriculum writing and development, new textbooks and online licensing purchases. We want to make sure we're keeping up with our mental health programs. Security, class three officer in each building for school days and events. A new building lease, which at the end of the day, we're getting a new building. I mean, I think that's really a big deal that we're adding about 12 new classrooms, a gym, a cafeteria, and space that we're going to be able to, to clear out some space in all three schools and open up and not have to share rooms and not have to stuff kids into classrooms. Capital projects and equipment. We're going to be doing some IT infrastructure upgrades in the new building, which we already started doing to make sure that that's up to par with all buildings. We're going to be doing roof improvements to help with the ESIP project. Also, new maintenance and field. We sometimes have to rent a scissor lift and a trailer and things like that. It comes out if we purchase it. Over two years, we start making our money back, so we want to start looking at things like that. Also, a new truck, because our old truck is starting to get old, and we also are going to be replacing some of the flagpoles in the two elementary schools and the field. Smartboards for all new buildings and, yes?
I'm sorry, I have a question. Did you say new fields?
No, 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 no. New flagpoles.
No, no, before that, but being that we're in the topic, and I'm sorry to interrupt with the budget, what about getting new fields that are greatly needed for our town?
Yeah, that would be something that we could discuss as soon as I'm done with this, but we started that conversation already, so I'm just finished up right now here, though, but our smartboards totaling.
I didn't hear that conversation, so I definitely would like to know, because that is something that I think that our kids greatly deserved, and it has been long overdue.
So, at the last hour, we're looking at, our last thing is smartboards for, to make sure we have some new ones for the new building, replacing old ones at the... So, what we're looking to do is each year, make sure our technology, we're adding new things to technology and replacing old before they break, or we have it ready for when it breaks. And that is the budget presentation for 21-22. I guess right now, we'll take any questions from the audience first, or board members too. You may ask any questions that you like.
I have a question. Can you share with us how many children came from the Atwater complex? And what buildings between Steen and the high school they're in?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me right now, but I looked early last week, and I counted 12. Most of the students are going to Steen now, if they're that grade, but once we get to a certain number, they get pushed to Bixby after we cap out. But I could get you, I could run a report tomorrow and find out exactly what grades they're in and give you that information. But I looked, and it was, it was 12 last week.
Much appreciated.
Yes, Mr. Miranda.
Kennedy, in addition to that, it would be nice, considering we've had record-high turnovers in homes and sales of homes at really amazing prices. Maybe, you know, some who have lived in this town forever never thought we would reach those numbers as we're a very hot town with blue ribbon and everything else, Bixby growing. So, great job, kudos to all of you. It would be nice to also see how many kids are coming from the recently sold homes, just so we can almost write.
Yeah, I think I can, I could run a report and see who has recently come into school, but even, I can even look more at what our numbers were last year at this time compared to where they are now. Because we don't really know if they purchased a home, or, you know, I don't know which house has been purchased, but we could see when they've transferred in in the last six months, and if that's been higher or lower.
Thank you.
And then, Mrs. Alvarez, and the discussion of the fields, that is something, we have broached that topic in the past. I know it's becoming another topic. So, it is something that, you know, I think the Building and Grounds Committee is going to get together soon and start discussing what we can and cannot do, what makes sense and what doesn't make sense. But before the pandemic hit, our Building and Grounds Committee didn't meet with the town council and start discussions on what we could do working together, and I think we could maybe get those discussions going again to see. My number-one priority is making sure we have space in the buildings, and as long as that we have space in the buildings, and we can look to see what, how we can add to fields and things of that nature without, you know, you know, if we raise taxes, we could do whatever we want. So, it's a nice, we gotta, we gotta fit that in there, but that's something that we're definitely going to be talking on a little bit more moving forward.
Well, the reason that I mentioned it to you is because if we really do talk, and if we discuss, and we come up with a plan, I'm sure that raising taxes wouldn't be the only answer. I mean, if you go to other towns, it's really an embarrassment when you come here to Bogota and you see the fields that our children have and what they've been using, the track team, for instance, they can't even run there. It's dangerous, they have to run on the street. They, they can't even, they can't even have any needs there or anything. And I think it's just, if we're able to work together, I mean, I've been a resident of Bogota for a very long time, and I keep on hearing, oh, we're going to discuss it, we're going to discuss it, but nothing ever gets done. And I don't think the excuse, so, yeah, we need to raise taxes to do something about it, no. We can definitely come together and work together. I think that will be the answer. And like again, I said, this is long overdue. I understand that your concern is the space, of course, in the schools, but this is something that seriously also needs to be looked at, and not just pushed to the side and pushed to the side how it's been.
So, Mrs. Alvarez, just to, just to maybe bring something up, it really makes me proud that there's another member of the board that's passionate about the same objective and goals. I have reached out personally to Mr. Kennedy as I'm learning through the process, just because I've, I've done extensive research to understand how other boroughs and towns and cities have accomplished these goals, just to learn the differences in what a referendum, how, why do we go to referendums? What can be done in referendums? Because as many of us may know, Board of Education simply can't bond, and Kennedy has indulged in that, in allowing me to understand that knowledge of some of the additional questions. What, you know, total, what has new fields? Will Lynn Park, you know, Tena Fly, Passaic? So many people are doing it, yes, Bogota's well overdue. It's one of the things that I'm, that I'm so passionate about trying to accomplish. I spoke to Mr. Kennedy a little bit, I wanted to thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for allowing me the time when I asked you a million questions, and you answered them all as best as you can, right? But I think it's fair that the board members understand that, that we, that this discussion hasn't come up, that you have actually, I believe, has, have basically probed the idea. And again, we don't know if it can happen without taxes or with taxes. I have looked at previous budgets, I've looked at, some of the things were coming off. Mr. Kennedy confirms that we may be coming off soon. We didn't talk about timeframe, but very briefly, we may be coming off of some, sorry, some referendums we've paid in the past that we've taken, that we've accomplished in the past, and there may be a few hundred thousand dollars coming aboard. The real question is, does that suffice an opportunity, right? Does that give the borough of Bogota, the children of Bogota, an opportunity? I want to share my opinions as we're on this topic, and so that everyone sees. For a long time, I've heard that Olson Park is the borough's fields, the football fields are the Board of Education field, and while quote-unquote or in paper, on paper, that is extremely accurate. For me, it's a taxpayers' field. It is, it is a, it is a Bogota field, it is the kids' fields. It belongs to the kids. My, my goal as a single board member, and again, I only speak on behalf of myself, I would obviously need all of your board, you know, these colleagues here, you, the colleagues, to join forces. I've learned that there can, there can be some sort of agreement if we can go to the borough and maybe ask them to help us in the process, whether it is to pitch in, whether there's an agreement where we're both using the fields, but we take down the fence and we create a sport complex. With that, there's a cost factor. Again, don't quote me, I'm not saying I know what I'm discussing. I'm saying that I've, I've asked enough questions to have a little bit of understanding, and maybe our Mr. Sukas can give us some clarity on what the possibilities are and give the public some clarity, because that's what it's really about. I think there's an, I'm trying to remember, it's called some sort of local something agreement where we, because maybe, just maybe, the town, if we came to an agreement, and it's pretty, it has to be pretty thorough, from what I understand, they can go out and bond, and we can commit to helping them pay that. There's a lot to understand, but I would love Mr. Kennedy to really pay forward, because we're just never going to know, right? To to really pay forward because we're just never gonna know, right? If we don't do the research, if we don't hire an engineer, if we don't look for an architect. If you don't ask um our council or go to external council who's done this to probe the matter. To probe the borough to at least figure out what the procedures are, what the processes are. We'll never know if we can give the children of Bogota, the town of Bogota this today, tomorrow, two years from now. You know, we, I would definitely want as a board, right? Um, it's long overdue, over twenty some, it's way long overdue. You know, I am excessively jealous right now that Hackensack with their somewhat of developments they've come on. They've been able to accomplish and they've put it everywhere on a sport complex. They already have an extensive recreation, says they're uh an extensive library. And we simply do not have anything. It doesn't matter whose fault it is. It doesn't matter, you know, why we didn't get there. What matters is how we achieve this in a in a very short term timeframe mentality, so. Um, I just wanted to make sure you understood, Mrs. Alvarez, that I spoke to Kennedy. Um, quite some time, just uh just to understand, and I felt that he was very passionate about it as well. But obviously cautious because um curriculum wise, educationally, he has a lot of goals. Um, and I'm and there's nothing better than than to have these goals. He's um, he's got targets. That, you know, he has to achieve, we have to help him achieve, but I totally agree with you. That the discussion of fields must happen now. The research of fields must happen now. We we cannot continue to drive through Main Street and and be the laughing stock of Bergen County. Because we don't have anything to offer our kids. That has to end now. And and I'm passionate about it. If the board gives me permission to at least. Go out and ask questions on to the borough, whatever the procedure is, and Mr. Sukas, you'll have to, you'll have to guide me here. But if the borough, if the board, my colleagues here as a board members can allow me the opportunity. I passionately would love with Mrs. Van Buren, whoever else, to really understand what it takes. For us to at least tell our community, this is what it takes. It's either a tax increase. This is what it costs, or we might be capable because we're coming off of of a referendum. We might have enough money considering that. The money's cheap right now. This is why I wanna really move this along. Money right now is a very cheap factor playing. There may be, for my opinion, you know. We have to look at the life expectancies of a turf field. It might be ten years versus thirty years, so the cost factor might be a little more expensive. To us, or or maybe third, I don't know all the answers, but I do want to learn them. I want to investigate. And if you guys gave me the authority, the permission on behalf of the board, I don't know what the real question question. For me to move forward, but I would love to sit down with the bur- I would love to have discussions and and be a part of whatever committee that takes. Um, and I'm sorry, I I it's something that I am glad you guys brought up. I'm very passionate about it and and that that's been my research so far.
No, and thank you, thank you so much. See, I didn't know that you and Mr. Kennedy had even exhausted. I I mean, this is something that, again, I've been a resident of Bogota for over twenty years. And you know what? It's a shame and and hopefully we can move forward, we can work together. We can come up with a plan and this is for the benefit of our children. For all the children here in Bogota, they deserve it, and I think it's about time we work together and we try and get something. You know, my kids growing up, I would always hear, well, this doesn't belong to a board of, well, this doesn't belong to this one, well. You know what? Who should have been moved to to the kids? I mean, that's the whole point, right? We're we're there for them. So all I'm saying is let's not put it in a back burner. And yeah, we'll discuss the next month or or the next month or the next. No. Let's get on with it and let's try to work together and come up with some sort of a plan, something. So thank you, thank you for telling me that. Now now it makes even better because I I wasn't even aware of that.
All right, if I could just interject, um, Mr. Kennedy and I did speak about it and about getting buildings and grounds and returning to. Where we thought we were going someplace just before COVID. There was great stride, there was great interest, it was great enthusiasm, there was a lot of conversation. So I think if they pull together buildings and grounds and we get back together and and Mayor and Council was also interested in working with us. So it so that obstacle wasn't there. The obstacle was COVID, which obviously through the whole world in the tizzy. So I think we just need to, and and obviously Central Office has been inundated with all the changes and. And the curriculum and the education and Dalia, you know, from just the classroom restructuring and teaching online and so forth. So definitely it needs to be something to get back to. Frank, you mentioned turf fields. That was discussed. For many years, that's a flood zone down there, so that's part of the problem with the turf field is the flood zone. Um, we can't really get the building curve, you know, curve army engineer, whoever that is, to come in and fix the problem. So I think if we start with getting buildings, getting grounds and meeting with Mayor and Council, it's a great step forward. Obviously, if we're all into in for it, we've got, you know.
Mi- Mrs. Van, President Van Buren, totally understand. Um, um, I'm I'm glad that it seems we're all on board. Um, again, I I do don't, I I really don't wanna focus on. On the flood zone because what I, for what I've learned throughout my research is that there's a lot of towns that were in the same position. Uh, there's a, like you said, an army of engineers, folks who have risen the properties up. Um, I just learned recently throughout my research in asking many questions around the county that um. Um, the park, and I always forget the name, I apologize, over by Teenac. Um, that the that park had to also come up off the ground. Another example during my council days, one of the biggest concerns uh of the community of the DEP and others was. That the new development was a massive flood zone. Um, and I, if I recall correctly, they're about eight feet above the the ground level, so the the bottom line is it can be done. Um, and and right, as as far as the turf fields as well, it can all be done. It, we just want, and I know COVID. Uh, threw a wrench at a lot of our gears overall across the country. Um, but we still owe it to the kids. All I'm asking is, please, please, let's move forward and and I'm glad that. All of you seem to be excited about it. I, uh, most for those who have children. Um, on the board, you know, our kids are using the fields and sadly so they're using a lot of the fields outside of Bogota. Hopefully, we can join forces and and make our Bogota beautiful and. And do what we need for our children. So thank you, Mrs. Van Buren, for giving me the knowledge. Um, as to kind of where you're at, and and I just wanna help all of you push it forward if if you need me. I'm here.
Great.
So just just so we're we're all, just to put a little ribbon on this. Um, I did reach out to the mayor. Um, and I I wanted to get through our budget presentation, pass our budget, and then I asked that we can meet. Um, his representatives with our building and grounds. Um, to start discussions on what could be accomplished, what couldn't be accomplished. And then also, uh, we had a meeting with our architects. Uh, and I and I said to them, look, we gotta really look down there. What can we do? What can't we do? Um, so those discussions have started. Um, but again, uh, passing the budget tonight's my first priority, and then after that. We can, we can move on and start looking at other things, but to me, uh, the budget tonight's the first thing before we look at something else.
All right, we do have a hand up there? Yes.
Mike Connors. Mike Connors, address, please.
Mr. Kennedy, uh, one more on the race street, Mike Connors. Um, I do, uh, I am excited about the discussion tonight. Um, I know this is biblical time, Mr. Kennedy, but if I may. Um, everybody is echoing what a conversation that had already started. Um, a year and a half ago, um, and as many of you have said already, COVID unfortunately interrupted that conversation. Um, Mr. Mr. Kellerman, our mayor. Um, myself and a bunch of the uh board members that are still here. Um, were able to meet with Mr. Kennedy at his office right before COVID hit, and unfortunately, that ended the discussion right there and then. Uh, just to um, go back to what Idalia, Ms. Alvarez said before. You know, unfortunately, not to go back through history because that, you know, we wanna look forward, but. Um, Idalia, the the reality is that the board and the council never agreed on this, and. I believe now, and I I only could speak for myself, of course, but I do know the mayor's feeling on this, and the mayor's feeling and my feeling is. That there is a strong uh Board of Education now. And there is a strong council now that both I feel are in favor of getting this done in some sort of a partnership deal. Um, I do think that this can be done. I brought it up at my last, at our last council meeting. It is a disgrace that our kids are using this field. We are. Commonly known as the redheaded stepchild of Bergen County when it comes to fields. Um, it is, it is a shame that our kids have to start, I don't know how many points it is down. When it comes to track meets, because we don't have certain. Um, you know, track events that we can host. Uh, we don't, we can't even, we have to go on the road, I believe. Right when I was on the board. Um, so yeah, listen, the 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 will is there. That's that's the good news. Um, I I believe the Board of Ed has the will. Um, and I think it's just a matter of putting it around the table like Mr. Kennedy said. And uh, hopefully, the council and Board of Ed can come up with a solution so that our kids can have a field. That they're uh proud of and that we can be, we can, uh, you know, look back in ten years from now and say that we did a good job putting that together. So I I I again, I can only speak for myself, but I do know there there are other uh council members that are in favor of this. Do we have the votes to get it passed? Uh, that's another question. Um, but I will do my hardest to move this ball forward. And I am as passionate, Frank, about this as you are and other board members that are sitting here tonight, so I applaud you. For putting this front and center and Mr. Kennedy, congratulations on.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Connors. Thank you. That that would be great, and working together is the key. Thank you.
And Mr. Kennedy, I I did wanna thank you for your presentation. Um, I I reviewed it. It's it's. It's very thought out. Um, it has future definitely written all over it as far as expansion. Our needs, um, and Mr. Kennedy, I I do want to apologize, I guess, on behalf of everyone. Uh, the community, the board, it's a lot of work, right? When you have to play catch up. Um, and I know that's where you're working on, you're working on buildings, you're working on grounds. You're you're working on staff, you're working on improving curriculum, language. I, as a Spanish speaking person, I thank you as well. Um, I wish I could teach it for free, right? But not that good, but all I'm saying is I I thank you for that. And and just to add some sprinkle, the fields as well. So I I truly thank you that you're passionate about all of this and. And just know that at least on my side, we're here to support you.
Any other questions from the community? I don't see any. So Damian, do you want to just do superintendent's report now to call up?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, soup report, so. Uh, a concern of ours has popped up recently and that of the high school boilers. Um. We 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 had a plan to replace them next year uh in the uh twenty two, twenty three school year. Uh, but our building and grounds guy, uh, Nick, is a little concerned that we might not get through next year with them. Uh, another one, they're very old. I think they're they're from the fifties. Um, so we tried to get the county out to give us an emergency request to replace them. Um, and it was denied. They feel we have enough time before October to um replace them. My concern is everything at the DOE has been slow. Um, they understood that and they said that they would help push it along, but I wanna put it out there. That, you know, we would have to have a backup plan, which we're already working on if the boilers were not able to be replaced. And they were, and one of them was happened to go. So I made that very clear to the county soup and I said, well, you know, what do I tell everyone if in November my boilers don't work? And you told me we had enough time and it's not enough time. He said, well, we'll we'll have to deal with it, but I feel that you should be able to get it done, so we're working with the county. Um, I just wanna make sure that our our boilers are ready to go, but I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. So it's not a problem today, but might be a problem in a year. Um, biology update, we seem to have very bad luck with this. Uh, person accepted the job on Friday. We spoke to them on Monday. We got their fingerprints processed. Uh, we called them on Wednesday, told them the county gave them approval to start. We didn't hear from Wednesday, Thursday. Uh, we finally got an email over the weekend that they had personal. Issues they have to deal and they cannot take the problem, so we're back to square one in biology. So we'll continue. We're calling colleges now, seeing if any kids are graduating in the next couple of weeks that are willing to come. Uh, also, last meeting, we discussed RFPs. I I met with Irvin and we reviewed the last couple of years of when we gone out for RFPs. Uh, so what we did look at uh is in May, we can go out for the auditor brokerage, insurance, bond council and special ed services providers. Uh, that we use. Uh, right now, the architect, we are pretty committed with all these projects over the last couple of years, so to me, that wouldn't make sense. Uh, and our cafeteria, we went out two years ago. Uh, and only one person applied, which happened to be them, so we wanna give go one more year with them. Uh, and then we would probably go out for RFP next year. And then also finally, some good news. Uh, each year, Newsweek comes out with high school rankings and the high school moved up. They were one sixty five in New Jersey. Uh, out of over four hundred high schools, uh, which is trending in the right direction, which is where we wanna go, so kudos to the administration, the staff and the students there. Uh, and that is it for today.
Thank you, sir. Um, excuse me, one second. Lisa is texting me. Lisa, no, I don't. This is that she's on.
Yeah, we see her. I see her.
She's here. Okay, yes, yes, okay, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so, welcome, Lisa. Uh, moving on to the minutes, please. We have March ninth, uh, work session in action meeting. Open, March sixteenth, regular meeting open and March sixteenth, regular meeting closed. May motion, please?
Miranda.
Someone? Thank you, second?
Second, Eileen.
Thanks, Eileen. Any discussion? All right. Irvin, do you wanna do a roll call on that?
Mrs. Silver.
Yes.
Mrs. Cole.
I see you, Lisa. Lisa, you're kind of in the dark. Can you?
Maybe a thumbs up if you say yes.
Yeah, it's yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Miss Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Shavis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Terry?
Thank you. Moving on to policy. Resolutions one through fourteen, four twenty seven, twenty one, oh, one, thirteen, the second readings. May I have motion?
Motion, Shiva.
Chavez, second.
John and Jose, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? A roll call, please, excuse me, roll call.
Mrs. Silver?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cole? Yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Miss Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Shavis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg? Marshall Terry?
Thank you. Moving on to education. Work twenty seven, twenty one, fifteen, through four twenty seven, twenty one, twenty one. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Yeah, yeah. Jose, second? Is that you?
Miranda.
It's, oh, sorry, okay, Frank, thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please, Irvin?
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Thumbs up, yes.
Yes, thumbs up.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Miss Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Shavis?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Terry?
Thank you. 427, 2122. You have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, Urfin, please.
Mrs. Silver?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cole? Comes up, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you. Personnel, 427, 2123 to 427, 2130. And motion, please?
Miranda.
Second?
Second, Eileen.
Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please, Urfin?
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Thumbs up, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you. 427, 2131. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Second?
Second, Chavez.
You? Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole? Thumbs up, yes. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you and congratulations to Principal Alfonso. Moving on to finance. Yes. I'm sure. 427 on finance, 427, 2132 through 38. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
DC, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Good. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda? Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you. 427, 2139. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda. Chavez?
Thank you. Discussion? And a roll call, please?
Mrs. Silver?
Yeah.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you. Moving on to 427, 2140, which is the budget. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mrs. Vanberg? Number four, number 41 is also the budget part of the budget goes to resolution goes to the candidates.
You want to do 40 and 41 together?
Yeah, if you can do as a block, I mean, if you want to go continuing like, I guess it's better to have them together.
Okay, so we're, then if I can go back to 40 and 41, may I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, Ortega.
Thank you. Alrighty, discussion on 40 and 41.
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you. Urfin, do you want me to do the three turns at the same time or do you want to do them one at a time?
I guess we can do the rest of it as a block.
The three of them together?
All of them actually together and we can open the discussion.
So I'm sorry, 42 right through to?
Till the end. 46.
Okay with you? That's fine. Okay. And if we may move 427, 2142 through? 40? Can't turn the page. Through 46. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
And second? Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Silver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Reckon?
Yes.
Mr. Chavez?
Yes.
Mrs. Vanberg?
Yes.
Marshall Carey?
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Is our student congress rep with us? I don't see her name on the attendees.
You would have to raise your hand.
Okay. Elsie, you there? I don't see. Alrighty, then on to old business. Anything on your old business? If not new business, anything else under new business?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
And congrats to Dr. Alfonso once again and being that he is. Going to be the principal for the new school. Do we know who or how are we going to go about the vice principal now than for the high school?
Yeah, so we're creating a new position, like a supervisor of student or pupil cert. Like a discipline and we're going to post for that position and have people apply.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I also want to congratulate Mr. Alfonso. As I wrote in my email. It sure shows our, our goals and where we're trying to reach in inclusion and diversity. You know, a little more resemblance of our community today in Bogota. So kudos to Mr. Alfonso, Doctor Alfonso, right? Not mister. He's earned and worked really hard. I would love to know as well what we would do now with vice president. It would be, it would be great to shadow such as Mr. Alfonso qualifications and, and, and someone that resembles our community. So much so, I also want to kind of say thank you to Mr. Kennedy, considering I'm in. Very, very deeply involved in the food industry to have kept these lunch meal prices to where they're at. Shocking considering how expensive food manif- and, and how hard food manufacturing has become today in America. We're not to, you know, I, I guess. Hopefully it's not one of those things you get what you pay for, but at least we have kept our prices pretty consistent. Not to beat on a dead horse. I just thought about something as far as the fields and discussion. I, I, I understand that we have our builders and grounds discussion. But Mr. Kennedy, as new business, it would be nice to, for us as a board to know whether or not we should. Get an engineer and, and, or hire someone or have someone look at it just to give us. You know, an understanding of what pricing may look like. Because I know builders and grounds do not maybe have the, the understanding of what it takes when they look at the fields and measure it. So as new business, I would love to, to maybe either we put it on the board for next week, for next meeting or something. Where at least we can go out and, and see what it would, what it may cost. I think that's, that'd be a good new business to start off for those fields for our children. Thank you.
Yeah, and with our architect, they do have, like their, their architect record. And they started this process for me, right? And they will have an engineer go down there and look at it. And give us their professional opinion. And then we would go from there. Like they give us some rough estimates of what they think it would cost. What would have to be done. So we have a meeting with them every, we have a meeting coming up with them on Monday. So we could dive a little deeper into that and discuss, you know, what, you know, can be done. And have them look at that for us. But we, we mentioned it already once to them. So they already said they were going to do a deep dive down there and start giving us more information.
Damien, they, they have looked at it already, correct?
Yes.
Yes, they did. They looked at our side, yes.
Right. So they're going to look at what side? The town side? They're going to look at the town side?
Well, they're going to. We're going to ask them to look at both again and tell us what their recommendation is.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, I could be wrong. Have, has any engineer looked at it? Because I know when it comes to flood, plumbing, piping, raising the property, that's an engineer's task and not an architect's task. So I'm just asking for knowledge.
So, correct. So the architect firm employs engineers that do all of our projects. Like so they do give us all the plans and they do all the deep dive into what we can and cannot do. So that's who we work with, who's our architect of record and they have their engineer work on projects for us. And yes, 100% an engineer does that.
Thank you.
Alrighty, if there's nothing else to the new business, we'll move on to here of the public. You have a motion, please?
Miranda.
And a second, please. Thank you. Any question? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Alrighty, um, once again, if you would please, if you have a question, raise your hand. We'll call on you, state your name and address. And if you put something in the chat room, also please put your name and address in there so that we can address it properly. I see Sherry gave the welcome to Dr. Alfonso. Sherry.
Nicole?
Hi, Greg. Yes. Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Nicole Palagano. I'm 210 Maplewood Avenue. And I'm, I'm late to the meeting, so forgive me if this was already covered. But I'm, I'm waiting for, I guess, announcements about the new middle school or what's going to be happening. Is there anything that can share or when an announcement, a formal will be going out to the parents?
So my plan was after this budget hearing to send that out this week. But the plan is to have our sixth and seventh grade next year move to that building. So we'll be sending that out and my plan is to have a meeting with those parents one night and answer any specific questions they may have.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike Connor.
And Antoinette.
Mr. Kennedy, a quick question about the same building. The old St. Joe's building. Are we still going to have the? The little guys going in there as well or is it just going to be the middle school?
We're just going to put the sixth and seventh grade now. We kind of need all the classrooms to make sure that we can house them all. And we, we opened up, we put a preschool classroom in Bixby. So our, after looking a little deeper into it and we would have to open up some walls and, and make it the proper space. Believe it or not, the little kids need more space than the older kids. So we decided against it because that building wasn't going to be ours and we didn't want to put any money into it that we didn't have to for pre-K at the moment, so.
And a second, second quick question. I saw on the agenda that the building hasn't been named yet. Just any thoughts about, you know, where the, the board would like to go as regards? Is it somebody, let's say a, a person that has, you know, distinguished themselves in Bogota in the past that we're looking at? I don't know what that process looks like. I, I know it's not going to be a willy nilly thing where you just decide to name it the Kennedy Building, but. But it's, you know.
It has a nice ring.
You, you like, you like that name, right? But.
To, to be honest with you, it's probably going to be something that we discuss. My problem with it though is that we, we're not, it's not a new building that we're going to have forever. It's, it's really just a five-year lease of the building. So whether it's Bogota Middle School, you know, I know we had a building in town was Dewey, make it Dewey Middle School. Or, you know, we're, we're definitely going to be open to discussion on that. I was going to start discussion with the boards on that. But that is something that we have talked about. But to, my problem is it's only going to be a five-year thing, the building. So I don't know if we want to do a real big naming ceremony for something that is not going to be here in five years. Because the idea would be the other three buildings would remain their names.
No, I understand. And, 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 and who knows, it may become a permanent fixture in Bogota. So I appreciate that, but maybe just leave it neutral, Bogota Middle School, that probably is the best solution. Thank you.
Antoinette? Antoinette?
Hi, good evening. Antoinette Ramirez, 98 Queen Anne Road. Real quick, I just wanted to say, so touching on the fields, you know, it's great it was brought up. I know it was brought up years ago. You know, my kids are heavy into sports, so it sounds wonderful. And the budget is, is a lot to take in and I, I think you guys did a great job. And I, I don't want to keep saying things. I know I do, you know, 10 years I've been saying it, but just please, so it doesn't go on the back burner. Whether it's with this new ventilation system or whatever it is, but please. The thought of air conditioning in the schools, I really just, I, I know I've said it before again, so forgive me. I know I'm on all the time, but it's just, it's not a luxury. To me, it's just, it's a necessity. These kids and staff need to be comfortable with teaching and working. And believe me, I know it's not like you're dropping it by the wayside or it falls on deaf ears. I just, while there's so many things that are being brought up and so many projects. And again, I don't know if it would make sense when this whole ventilation project is taking place. Or when you do go out for referendums and things, but you know, please, if that could be. You know, something that really is, is discussed and, and considered sooner rather than later, that would be wonderful. And as to Dr. Alfonso, congratulations. Huge loss for the high school, but wonderful for him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Carmel?
Hi, Carmel Bernie, 162 East Fort Lee Road. In regards to the St. Joseph's Middle School. Being in that school many times before, are you going to be, or, or is the town going to be making any enhancements for ADA compliance? I know there's only one chair lift in a staircase, but other than that, it's very difficult to get around if somebody hurt themselves or they have issues. So I was just wondering about that.
Yeah, we've been working with the architects and they're making recommendations of what we have to do to be eligible to be in the building. So yes, that's all the, everything is being taken into account that it's, we, we want to keep it up to our standard of building. Technology, security, everything that we have in the other building. We don't want the kids going to another building and there's less there. We want to be better or the same as the other buildings.
Okay, thank you.
I think that might be it. Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything else?
One more.
One more.
Susan Cruz?
Hi, good evening. Susan Cruz, 193 Walnut Avenue. Just wondering, I know we have a prom date, which is very exciting. Do, do you know if the high school will be having an awards, academic awards night or sports award? I think they did a breakfast last year.
You know what? And I forgot to mention this, I'm sorry, but the governor did lift a lot of restrictions that we're going to be able to hold some of our ceremonies. This was on my list of things to say and I, I must have skipped over, but there's going to be allowed to be dancing at the prom. We could do some indoor graduations. So we're going to have some, we're going to have some normalcy towards the end of the year. So the guidance just came out last night. So we actually started looking at it today and going through and making sure that we're able to do some things. But yes, I think we're going to be able to do some things in smaller numbers. yes, I think we're going to be able to do some things in smaller numbers, obviously, but, you know, have some normalcy for our graduating students this year.
Okay. Do we have a graduation date?
I believe right now, the next meeting, I'm going to be finalizing the calendar, but June eighteenth would be our high school graduation, which I believe is a Friday. That would be the last day of school with the elementaries on the Wednesday and Thursday.
The high school graduation would be on their last day of school, June eighteenth?
June eighteenth.
And because of things opening up, do you foresee any problem, like, a limit to guest number? Is it just parents only?
Right now, they gave us information, so we have to look to see where we have graduation and how many people could fit there. So there is capacity limiting. But you don't count your students this time. You don't count the staff out of there. It's more just a visitor. So we're hoping that by the end of this week, we have more information and they're going to have meetings with the senior students to discuss what they can and cannot do.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Alright, I think that's it for the evening. Mr. Kennedy, did you have anything else?
No, that's all I have for tonight.
Wonderful. In that case, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Miranda.
Oh my goodness, lots of motions. I'm assuming that Ervin got one of those. And a second, please?
Second, Lisa.
Okay. Any discussion? Alrighty, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Take care.
Hi, everybody.
Enjoy the weather.